Taking care of a little business in the back. That's how the sausage is made, so we appreciate you, appreciate your patience. Why don't I start this afternoon with some appointments? Let's start with the miscellaneous business. Let's start with the first appointment, Amanda Sarafina Fimi? Is she here? Amanda, appointment, okay, so she's appointed, she's being appointed to the Animal Hearing Board? She's not here, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
She was on virtually, if you give me, she's no longer on, so let me see if I can locate her.
Okay. Meanwhile, we'll, look, how about Renee Strebe? Strebe? She's here? All right. Hello ma'am, how are you? Good, come on up, have a seat, hit that button to turn on the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself and we appreciate your willingness to serve on the Baltimore County Police Accountability Board.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the council's information, in your booklets, in the back, under the miscellaneous tab, you do have the cover letter from the county executive as well as the resume for each of the nominated appointments for today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am?
Hello, it's nice just to meet all of you. I'm Renee Strebe and I apologize for my allergies deciding to kick in today. I'm a retiree from Johns Hopkins University. I live in Perry Hall Nottingham area. Very interested in being involved in my community. I'm a member of the Women's Club of Perry Hall, Perry Hall Improvement Association, and the White Marsh PCRC. I've also completed the Civilians Academy, Citizens Academy, sorry, and I've been married 53 years. I have one husband, two children, two grandchildren, and two dogs. I'm very honored to have the opportunity to be appointed to the PAB and I'm hoping that I will receive your confirmation.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you go over those numbers with me one more time?
Sure.
I started with one husband.
One husband.
Okay.
One, two, two, and two.
Okay, well, listen, we really appreciate you and congratulate you on your nomination and we appreciate your willingness to serve. This is a very, very important board and we appreciate you being nominated by the county executive. Any additional questions or comments by the members?
Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Strebe would fill the spot for the District Five representative. Frank Ward, who had been confirmed by the previous county council, declined to serve and Ms. Strebe expressed an interest. I cannot speak more highly about Renee Strebe. Renee, as she mentioned, has been president of the Women's Club of Perry Hall, which is the oldest civic organization in Perry Hall. She has vast professional experience, having worked at Johns Hopkins University as their Assistant Director of Resident Life. She's extremely detail-oriented, she's got an extensive community background, and above all, I think she's eminently fair, which is important for this body. She has my wholehearted endorsement and I want to thank you very much for stepping up to serve.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions, comments? Okay ma'am, we will, we thank you for your time coming in today. We will be voting for you Monday in the evening. Wait one second? Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Sarafini made it back online.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
All right. Now we'll go back to Animal Hearing Board, Ms. Amanda Sarafini. Ms. Sarafini?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
Well, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon and we certainly congratulate you on your selection or nomination for the Baltimore County Animal Hearing Board. And if you don't mind, can you share a few comments with us about yourself or how you look forward to participating on the board?
Absolutely. My, so my name's Amanda Sarafini. I've lived in the Baltimore County area my whole life. Currently, I work as the Operations Manager for Perry Hall Animal Hospital and I've been involved in both the veterinary and animal welfare field for about 18 years. So, you know, I feel that I have a very extensive knowledge of, you know, pet care, basic animal needs, what's right, what's wrong. I have three cats of my own, getting ready to rescue a dog next month to add to the family, and I also have a husband and almost two-year-old son. I'm looking forward to serving officially on the board. I've been shadowing the meetings now since this past summer and they've been very interesting. You know, I really appreciate, you know, what the board does and I'm looking forward to being more involved with them.
Okay, thank you so much. We congratulate you. Any questions or comments from the members? Councilman Marks?
This is Perry Hall Day. Yes, Ms. Sarafini, thank you for being an outstanding veterinarian, well-regarded in the Perry Hall area and for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, again, we will be voting on your nomination Monday night and we appreciate you being here this afternoon and you'll also have an opportunity to repeat your testimony Monday night if you're present. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we move on to page three. Energy and Sustainability Coordinator Seth Bluman. Seth, how are you doing today?
Good evening, council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with FSI engineers to provide systematic evaluations of facility systems and implementation of cost-effective measures targeted to reduce energy consumption and improve facility operations for the Eastern Family Resource Center and the Jefferson Building. As a commercial, electric, and natural gas customer of Baltimore Gas and Electric, BGE, the county is eligible to receive financial incentives through the building tune-up program, also termed as retrocommissioning, which helps ensure that building, equipment, and systems are integrated so they perform together effectively, efficiently, and meet current operating requirements and expectations. So retrocommissioning focuses more on adjustments and calibrations to systems rather than capital upgrades or replacements. A tune-up can yield benefits such as returning equipment to its proper operational state, extending the service life of equipment, reducing maintenance and repair costs, and adjusting and correcting operating schedules. Examples of measures can be diagnostic and function tests of major systems, calibrations, or just simple measures such as replacement of equipment filters. The county sought technical services for this program through BGE-approved service providers authorized to serve as participating contractors. The county RFP Evaluation Committee recommended an award to FSI Engineering in this election process so that it was competitively bid and awarded based on technical program experience, the ability to have done this and go through this process with BGE. So FSI engineers will provide the following services: full site investigation and review of system performance, develop recommended energy conservation measures through lifecycle assessment and modeling, planning and leading the design of upgrades, and implementation of measurement and verification. The total contract value is $82,000 for two years with one additional one-year renewal option. The minority business and women-owned business enterprise participation rate requirement is 20%. So the administrative office recommends an award to FSI engineers for large facility tune-up program services. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Seth. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much, Seth.
Thank you.
Next we'll move on to page seven, David Likens, Director of Environmental Protection
Director Likens? Good afternoon, Chairman Jones, members of the council. Administration would like your approval of a contract with Coastal Resources to do macroinvertebrate sampling in both tidal areas and stream areas. Macroinvertebrates are the bugs that live in the bottom of the stream, which are excellent indicators of water quality. So you might find certain sets of bugs in really good, high-water quality, other sets of bugs in low-water quality, and we use these for our MS4 permit to determine where we should do stream improvements, water quality improvements. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. There was no WBE, MBE requirement, however, the selected contract is with a woman-owned It was competitively bid and we did select a little bidder.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Crandall?
Good afternoon, Mr. Likens.
Good afternoon.
Is this a new initiative by the county or is this something that we were doing ourselves or previously contracted?
Sir, this is, we have a contract that's expiring this spring, so this is a replacement of an existing contract.
Got it, thank you. And this, this does not, I'm assuming, anyway, you can tell me if my assumption is incorrect, that this does not affect the sampling that the county is already doing for our favorite friend that Councilman Jones cannot pronounce?
Correct.
Got it.
Now, we've been required to do this as part of our MS4 permit for many years and we've had, sometimes we have our own employees do it if they're certified to do it, but in this case, we don't have anyone currently on staff to be able to do it, so we need to have contractors do it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. On that note, I'm trying to think of how to say it, so I'm trying not, maybe I won't say it. Can you help me with the pronunciation?
Midges.
Midges, right.
Correct, sir.
I want to guess congratulate you and the department and everyone else on their efforts and actions to mitigate the midges. It was, you know, I'd admit, it started out like a puzzle to me, but clearly after hearing the testimony of the people and seeing the pictures and the destruction and the annoyance that they were causing in terms of economics, in terms of people wanting to go in certain places and damage to people's boat and property, it was a big deal. And I appreciate all the actions that were taken to mitigate it and they are ongoing.
Yes, thank you very much, we really appreciate that. We have it in this year's Capitol budget to continue the program. I think we started spraying last week for trying to get a jump on, even though the water temperatures are cold right now, they're not active, the midges are down in the mud, so they're not flying around. We're trying to get them and kill them in the mud so they never get to fly around.
Okay, but our war effort is still going strong?
Absolutely. And in fact, we're working with Baltimore City and the Maryland Department of Agriculture to actually take that same BTI, which is naturally occurring bacteria, and place it into the treatment plant, not to spray it by helicopter on the river, but actually to place it into the treatment plant where the midges are to kill the larvae in the treatment plant and the eggs that would come out into the river.
I'm happy to know that our air force is continuing to spray and I'm happy to know that we have some allies that have joined us in the fight against these horrible midges.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, couldn't agree more. And the, the program is working, both scientifically and from, I'm sorry, anecdotal evidence from constituents. I think it's been a huge success. Thanks to the administration's work, Mr. Likens and his department, cooperation with the state, and now with hopefully more cooperation from Baltimore City, we will get to levels of the midge fly that are livable. And it's taken a long time for us to get here and I'm extremely appreciative of the efforts that have gone in and it's, I believe if I'm not mistaken, the helicopter's flying today or tomorrow?
Yeah.
Today, the helicopter's flying today. And I do take, take the opportunity when I'm talking to the public to let people know that the product that is being dispersed into Back River to target the midge fly is not a chemical or a pesticide, it is a larvicide, it's a naturally occurring substance that only threatens a few insects, the midge fly is one of them, I believe mosquitoes and black flies are also affected, so, and they're not as much of a nuisance, but they, fish are okay, birds are okay, and this, this substance is actually a pellet dropped by the helicopter that gets into the mud where the larvae eat the mud and then are gone. So again, a huge success and really appreciative of everybody that put their effort into, it's been a decades-long battle for this, for this to be addressed. And in the year that it's been going, it's been a huge success and again, the metrics are there from a scientific standpoint and just anecdotally in the communities surrounding Back River, it's, people will tell you that there are a lot less that they've been, they've had to deal with. So thank you for bringing it up and we'll look forward to this budget season, we'll get to approve the program again in partnership with the state and as Mr. Likens said. Why do I always want to give the head of depths the title of doctor? I did that seven years ago.
I don't know why, when he's clearly a gentleman.
Well, we'll call you Dr. Likens, we're just not going to pay you anymore. So, yeah, it's, thank you, Mr. Chairs, I didn't mean to ramble on there, but it's an important issue to the Seventh District and it's a government program that has worked out the way that we thought it would and is having success, so.
I want to, General Likens, we thank you for your continued efforts in your war against the midges and just know that this council stands firmly behind you, sir. Continue to carry on the fight. Wait, wait.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Likens, did you go to Towson University? Yes, I did. I think Councilman Crandall, that's why you call him doctor, because of the fine indication we Towson Tigers receive.
Does that mean that Towson's criteria to earn a doctorate are much lower than other universities? Is that what you're saying?
It's equivalent.
Great, now the president of the university's going to be calling both of us. Way to go.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next we move on to page 11, Lawrence Richardson. Health and Human Services. Mr. Richardson, it's always good to see you and what's your report against the war against COVID?
Not against COVID today, but against opioids and harm reduction.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones, members of the council.
The administration is seeking to enter into a contract for harm reduction services expansion with Gardenzia in the amount of $73,776 with four one-year renewals not to exceed $959,88,000. The Department of Health is proposing to engage with Gardenzia to expand our harm reduction outreach to include distribution of harm reduction supplies, naloxone education, and outreach to persons actively using substances. Gardenzia will also provide outreach and education to persons who are at highest, who are at highest risk for fatal or near fatal overdoses. The goal of these expanded services is to improve the continuum of care for persons who are actively using substances and reduce the incidence of opioid overdoses and overdose death within this population. Gardenzia will deliver services focused on persons who are least likely to access services through traditional outreach methods. Services include community-based harm reduction supplies, education, and access to services including treatment. Examples of people served would be people experiencing homelessness, people who are actively using drugs, and people who lack access to reliable transportation.
Right. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the members? I tell you, Mr. Richardson, I won't go on too long for the interest of time, but just know that we are just as adamant to help people on opioids as we are with the midges, more so, I would add, just in case somebody's keeping track of time. I don't want them to say we spent more time on the midges than opioid abuse, so we thank you so much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Sure. Next we'll move on to page 14, Faith Thomas, Real Estate Compliance. How you doing, Ms. Thomas? Good, good.
Good afternoon, council members as well. The administration is requesting approval of three contracts to acquire land and easement access spanning in total approximately 0.20 acres for $28,450 for the construction of a sidewalk along Windsor Mill Road. There are three contracts that are being presented today. The first FM4 is a contract with John L. Schneider and Grace E. Schneider for $5,210 for land acreage of 0.026 and easement access of 0.037 acres located at 6727 Windsor Mill Road. FM5 is a contract with Vincent Ani for $11,083 for 0.037 acres and easement access of 0.026 acres located at 6739 Windsor Mill Road. FM6 is a contract with Alice J. Burrow and Roy C. Burrow for $12,157,000 for 0.043 acres and an easement access of 0.031 acres located at 6746 Windsor Mill Road. All of the properties are zoned DR 5.5 and the acquired land will be used, as you know, for highway widening areas and the easements will be used for temporary construction areas where the sidewalk will be installed. The compensation I've gone through and I noticed that we had one question, which is, when the county is going to be compensating property owners for site impacts such as fencing via the contract of sale compensation amount, how does the administration ensure that the county is not also incurring the cost to offset the site impacts such as cost to move or replace fencing during the project's construction phase? The property owners are compensated for takings. Takings include in-fee acquisitions of property, encumbrances of both perpetual and temporary easements, and improvements and landscaping within those areas that are not being replaced. If the project requires the county to take down an owner's fence, for example, we will replace that fence or perhaps relocate the fence. The property owner is not compensated directly under those circumstances. However, there are costs associated with replacing the fence, which are part of the construction cost for the project. There is one category of damages paid to property owners that falls outside of the actual taking and this is known as damages to the remainder. The Windsor Mill sidewalk project has a few items that have damage to the remainder. So are there any questions from me?
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the members? Only thing I will add is I appreciate the administration's diligence on this issue. It's been a very, very, very long time coming and it was one of the very, if not the first thing I asked for to Kevin Caminits when I first took office back in the year was, and he said, "This is going to be a lesson for you in government." And it has taken a while, but this administration's been very serious and very deliberate to get it done. And I guess I appreciate it very much and I'm sure the residents of the community and that Windsor Mill community appreciate it as well. We've had a number of fatalities here, people walking down the street, and we hours of the morning trying to get to work, and the least we can do is provide a safe haven, a sidewalk for people to walk to work and not get killed. So, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers, and thank the county executive, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Sure. And by the way, I say I asked for it, I asked for it because the community demanded it. And the community under the late, great delegate Emmett Burns bought me in, gave me the whole project, the people signed off on it, everybody was in support of it, so it was a good thing, a great thing. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. And when the administration began, this was one of the first issues that was presented to us as well. And when I went back to look through historical records on this project as well as the Health Department relocation, which made absolute logical sense, the projects were just stalled. So we are pleased to have been able to resurrect the projects and move them along and there are, just so we'll know, there are 64 easements along the Phase One, which is from Woolon Drive to Featherbed Lane. That is a segment of the road that, where the fatality, one of the fatalities took place. So this is something that this community has wanted for many years and it's my understanding that the project discussion started over 10 years ago. So when you look at how long it would take all three phases, it will be another 10 years before the entire project's done. So when you look at the allocation of funding across 10 years, you're talking about minimal from the standpoint of 64 houses and another 60-some houses and then the final phase, which runs all the way to Rolling Road, from St. Luke's Lane to Rolling Road where Reverend Burns Church at St. Luke's Lane is another very bad intersection and no sidewalks to cross is located as well. At best, we'll be able to finish one phase of this project in this, in this, the remainder of this term.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Rogers. Next I'll move on to page 20, Ms. DeAndrea Walker, Department of Public Works in Transportation. Ms. Walker, how are you?
I'm well, sir, thank you.
Good. Tito's? Go ahead.
I heard a little birdie told me that it's somebody's birthday today.
Yeah, it is, it's Albert Einstein's birthday today.
I don't think so, I don't think so. A happy birthday to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I tell everybody that God only had so much brains to give out on March the 14th, so he ran out of it when he gave them all to Albert Einstein and, so some of Albert Einstein's ideas actually come from me because I don't have, you know, he has my brains.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Tito's Contractors to provide general and skilled labors and supervisors at our three facilities, our three solid waste facilities, at the eastern, the central, and the western facility. This contract will commence upon council approval and continues for two years with renewals for up to eight additional one-year periods. Specifically- Specifically, the department, uh, we estimate a total compensation over that, uh, eleven-year period of twenty-six million, including, which includes the renewals and extensions. We'll have a site supervisor, and these employees will work, uh, full forty hours per week at each facility. They'll be doing things such as our manual sorting at our recycled, uh, materials on our single-string processing lines. They'll be doing groundskeeping and lawn maintenance and general, uh, housekeeping chores at our three facilities. This was a competitive procurement. Uh, we received three proposals, and we also have a five percent MBE requirement on this contract. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members? None, go right ahead, Ms. Rogers.
Go to the second contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, the second contract, the administration is requesting approval of a contract with Team Service Corporation of New York to provide maintenance and repair services for our sewage pumps and related equipment, uh, utilized at our, uh, pumping stations. As you know, we have about a hundred and twenty pumping stations. This contract specifically is for those large pumps that we need, uh, special assistance with repairing. Uh, compensation for this contract cannot exceed six hundred and sixty thousand, uh, dollars over the entire five-year, four-month term. And, uh, this contractor, of course, will provide all of the labor, the materials, the tools, and the equipment, and the troubleshooting when we have, uh, sewage pump issues or failures. Um, in addition, this contractor needs to be, uh, able to provide on-call emergency field service repairs and consultation twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, 'cause we never know when something may happen with one of our pumping stations. This was also a competitive procurement process, and we have a twenty percent MBE participation on this contract. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the members? Hearing none. So important to have those pumping stations working. Next contract, Ms. Rogers, page, I mean, next contract, page twenty-eight.
The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Pure Technologies, better known as WOCS, uh, Water Services, to provide emergency assessment, labor, parts, services necessary to turn off and repair water main valves owned, that they are owned by Baltimore City. This contract, um, just to go into it a little bit, Madam Mayo and the C E has asked us to be prepared in instances where we may have a water main break and the city is not responding, um, is not able to respond as quickly as we may need them to when the water's, um, shooting out, going on the roads, damaging our roads, so.
Turning the ice.
Right. So, I was asked to come up with a plan so that if we needed to do something, that, uh, we had a contract in place. This is a nine oh two contract. WOCS is the only vendor that the city allows to turn off valves, uh, when there's a water main break, so we had to put it in as a nine oh two F. This contract, um, is for, this contract is for a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-five dollars for, per technical personnel, and it's a not-to-exceed amount of five hundred thousand for the entire three-year, uh, five-month period. We really hope that we don't have to use the contract, but we wanted to have something in place. I'll take any, uh, questions that you may have.
No, I, I, I guess, um, go ahead.
I've, obviously, we've heard in the legislature they're discussing, um, how we engage in the city and, uh, our water services. So, this real, and like you said, this is for emergency purposes, but we're, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, if we can't, or the city can't, address an emergency shut-off, that, has this been a problem? I'm just not familiar with them not being able to shut things off in the past, but.
So, um, it's not that they don't, they're not able to shut them off. They may not be able to get to the area as quickly as we would like for them to get to the area.
Got it.
So, they are always responsible for coming out. Sometimes it takes longer than we would prefer.
Gotcha, I'm just clear for we're gonna pay an extra five hundred thousand dollars so they can obviously get a timeline, but yeah.
Right, that's the maximum over the three-year that I can expend.
Understood, understood, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Councilmember Tocque.
Thank you. It's a little concerning that the, that, uh, you know, we are, the city is required to turn off water mains when they leak, but we, we feel that they don't, they're not responsive enough. It's, I mean, it, it seems odd, and that's question one. Question two is, is WOCS the, or WOCS is the only person that can do this? To me, that seems odd that they've cornered this market that no other minority contract, women-owned business enterprise can get in this field and, and help us out when we have a water main. And that just, all of it seems odd to me, and I don't mean to be critical, but, uh, yeah, as Councilman, um, Young indicated, it seemed like we're, we do have some obligation to the city, but the city is not responding quickly enough, and then we have just one, one other vendor that can do this kind of work.
Well, what I'll say is that the relationship has been good with the city. We call, we have conversations, we have monthly meetings. Um, so we have been working closely with the city, but there are times, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, you know, it takes a lot longer to get people out. And I talk to you all a lot when there's a water main break. And when the residents are yelling, you want to have the ability to be able to be responsive. And this just gives us the ability, if for some reason, and sometimes they have two or three going on at the same time, and.
Fair enough.
I just need that opportunity to be able to.
Sure.
Say that we can do something.
Fair enough, uh, Ms. Walker. Uh, in fact, I think I have a text from you right now about.
Yep, we got one right now.
Mr. Chairman.
But just, uh, could I just, the, the second question is, uh, WOCS seems to have cornered the market on this. And is there the ability to work with the city to, to try to broaden, you know, so that we can have not just one vendor that has the ability to do this, but multiple vendors and, um, create opportunities for maybe small business to get involved in some of these contracts?
So, I'll go back and I'll see if they did a competitive process as well when they did their contract. I had to do it as a nine oh two F because that's who they use. So, I had to use who they use, I couldn't go out.
I see, so they may have bid it themselves.
Yes, sir.
And the Board of Estimates approved.
Right, yes, sir.
WOCS, gotcha.
So, that's what I had to be, 'cause I, I was only authorized to use who they currently use.
Got it, thank you, good answers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah, thank you very much. Director of, isn't it true that should the half-million dollars be spent, it does not come out of the county's general funds?
No, sir, it does not.
It doesn't, it comes out of the Metropolitan.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I should've said that.
I'm sorry.
I should've said that, yes, sir, it comes out of the Metro.
So, it's not coming out of our county's general funds, okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, I was gonna, uh, reiterate, um, what Director Walker said. It's, a lot of times, it's, it's capacity, because the city has a number of contractors, but unfortunately, when you got a holiday and you might have multiple breaks in the city, then we have a major issue here. If all of their contractors are deployed dealing with things in the city, which we know that their infrastructure is a lot older than ours, that's what creates the delay. We wanna have a backup plan, so we don't have to wait, because it's only so much capacity within the system. And, uh, the nine oh two F is about the continuity between what they're doing. If we have our own contract, we can execute our emergency contract if they're not gonna be able to get, uh, out as quickly as we want our residents to. Issues here in the county to be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers, and I didn't mean to, to, to city bash, because I think they do do a fine job when, with my team, uh, when we, uh, interact with, uh, city D P W. Um, but they're, and they do triage water leaks. For example, there was small ponding on Liberty Road, and wasn't really a problem, uh, in the summer months, but ponding in the winter months is a real, it becomes more urgent, because it becomes freezing. And so, uh, the city did, you know, I think they were calculated, they said, "Can you just, we'll get to it." Uh, if this were the winter, we would get to it yesterday. But, uh, but we do understand that some triage of, of our aging infrastructure needs to take place.
And it's just ironic, a couple of our breaks, it was just like uncanny, happened on holidays. Fourth of July, uh, New Year's, it was New Year's Eve, it was like, what is this? It kept happening on holidays, and you know, that makes it even worse, because you got a holiday, you got people with families, and we just wanna have a Plan B.
Well, Ms. Rogers, go right ahead.
Uh, well, this, Ms. Walker, uh, responded on Christmas Eve to a water leak in my neighborhood. So, you're exactly right, thank you.
They always seem to happen on the holidays, I don't know what, I'm just gonna start going out of country.
We're Saturdays, a lot of our work's Saturdays.
I, I remember when, you know, we would have these problems in the winter when it was freeze-up. Those are back in the days when we had a winter. Now, I'm not so sure, uh, I don't remember winter even being here, I don't remember wearing a coat, but, um, enough of that. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, thank you so much. I mean, Ms. Walker. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, I was, I was just looking at you admiring that wonderful sweater you're wearing. More than welcome.
My husband gave it to me.
Oh, it's wonderful. I'm gonna make a request i- in, in the dis- not, in the not-so-distant future, we're gonna have the AKAs here for like a little AKA night, and, uh, we would like you to wear that and say hello to the AKAs.
My pleasure, I'm sure they would love to come.
Also knowing that. That's right, right. Okay, next, we'll move on, uh, where are we, so we wrap this up. Uh, page two, Bill eleven dash twenty-three, Councilman Marx.
Thank you very much. Um, Miss Bel Castro is gonna put up a brief PowerPoint that I did about this, uh, bill, because, uh, there's some new members here, and I just wanna orient them toward the Honeygo area. Uh, the Honeygo area is in Perry Hall, it's a special district created in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, the legislation was sponsored by my predecessor, Vince Gardina, and it guides development in northeastern Perry Hall. Uh, the Honeygo plan contains stronger building standards than found in other parts of Baltimore County, uh, including the toughest adequate public facilities restrictions in county history. Um, Honeygo has been wildly successful, um, if you've, um, ever been there, uh, Liv's Grill, Libor Torres, um, the parks along Honeygo Boulevard. The quality of the housing stock has helped retain homeowners in Baltimore County who might otherwise have purchased property in places like Carroll or Hartford Counties. Next slide, please. So, what Bill eleven, uh, twenty-three does is Bill eleven twenty-three, um, there's two things. It extends the prohibition against panhandle plots to all of Honeygo. Um, in the, um, last election, uh, the part of Honeygo that was in the sixth district was moved into the fifth district. So, all of Honeygo is now represented in the fifth district. It also requires that open space be internalized each new development, instead of allowing developers to pay a waiver fee. Um, this is something we talked about, I believe, Councilman Catch and I were talking about the last session, about the need for developers to be internalizing open space. Um, this is a bill that's supported by the Perry Hall Improvement Association, um, and it only affects the Honeygo area in the fifth district. I'll repeat, this only affects the Honeygo area in the fifth district. That's all, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the members? So, it, is it built out already?
A lot of it is built out. Um, there's a still substantial amount of land that's available, uh, but a lot of it has been built out. I would estimate probably ninety percent of the billboard area's been built out.
Okay. All right, any additional questions or comments? None, we will move on to, uh, good question. Uh, we'll move on to Bill, uh, ten dash twenty-three. Um, so, ten dash twenty-three is, uh, sponsored by myself. Use is permitted in the R C two zone, catering halls converted from dwellings. Let me, uh, first, uh, recognize that this has been an ongoing issue that dates back quite some time, and I wanna guess take an opportunity to thank my colleague, uh, Councilman Catch, who worked on this for some time prior to this air, this area becoming, uh, assigned to me. But, uh, I would be remiss if I did not, uh, recognize him for all his hard work and dedication to this issue. Uh, thank you. Uh, this issue, uh, concerns a particular dwelling in a community that was purchased by, uh, the property owners now with the desire to turn this beautiful, uh, property that was once a landscaping, uh, business into, number one, the dwelling itself will be, can be able to be used for, uh, events such as weddings, or mitzvahs, or whatever else you wanna have there. And the outside of the property, uh, parts of the acreage would be used for educational facility. Basically, uh, doing some of the things that we used to do at the, uh, it is my understanding, and somebody can help you when they come up and testify, we used to do a lot of these things at the Ag Center in, uh, conjunction with Farmer Bill, doesn't it? Stan, Farmer Stan. And, and Farmer Stan is now, uh, he lives in the area. So, now Farmer Stan is actually utilizing this space for those educational, uh, trips. So, um, we've had an awful lot of, uh, once I found out about it, I thought about it, I talked to my colleague, I went out there, I had a town hall meeting specifically about it. Uh, we had, I'm not sure how many people show up. And when you come up and testify, you can share with us how many people attended that meeting. We went through an awful lot of, um, conditions and, and questions about the project itself. Uh, then, it is my understanding that the, I've had several meetings with the, the property owners, the Lippi family, and then they went out and came back for me, with me, or to me, I should say, a list, a petition, if you will, of all the neighbors in the area. I don't even know how many pages it is, I don't even know how many people signed. Uh, people that were signing that they were in support of this change. Uh, we tried to, uh, narrow this down as tight as we could so that we can make sure that this particular approval would not extend throughout Baltimore County. Uh, there are some limitations on how narrow we can make it, but this is where we are now. And, um, any questions or comments from our members, we have quite a few speakers?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say that, uh, I'm not very happy with what has happened to the Ag Center. Uh, the Ag Center at one time, uh, had the Maryland Agricultural Resource Council was there, and they basically ran the agricultural section of that facility. Uh, under the previous administration, uh, the relationship, uh, was strained. It got worse and worse and worse. And now Mark has disbanded, and there really isn't, uh, at this beautiful facility on Chuan Road, there really isn't the agricultural community support that it was intended for. When you think of the amount of money that Baltimore County has invested in preserving land, we've preserved seventy. we've preserved seventy of eight, the goal is eighty thousand acres. We've have preserved seventy thousand acres of land. And uh, you know, I, I, sorry to, to say, I'm not insulting any of the farmers, but some of the farmers are getting up there in age. Uh, and uh, uh, you know, we need to have an, a active Ag, Ag Center. Because we need a place where people who want to farm or even don't know what it is can go, can find out about farming. Because we're gonna need people to do this work in the future. I've, Glenn, what is the average age of a farmer now? I, I forget, but it's up there. Sixties, okay. And uh, so the Ag Center was also used to test crops. Uh, the best kinds of crops. I- in Baltimore County, you have a particular, like the different types of corn. Which types of corn grow best in Baltimore County? Uh, I could go on and on about the Ag Center. And uh, it's such a shame because it, it is such a gem that uh, you know, and the original purpose of it, because I was in the state legislature when this was approved. Money from the state came in, et cetera. And everybody was very optimistic about what was going to happen in the future. How this was gonna help the Ag community. And I don't think many people here, well, I think the farmers do, have any idea. The agricultural economy in this county is huge. And the number of people it impacts is huge. So uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that uh, you know, the, this educational opportunity has left the Ag Center. I know why it left. I mean, I, you know, but uh, uh, we need, as a county, to develop the Ag Center again. It's vital that we do that. And uh, you know, I would urge the administration to work, work on that and work with uh, uh, with the farmers. Uh, there is a, a public, well, public, a farmer input meeting on uh, Saturday, the twenty-fifth of this month at uh, Pharmacy Brewery, which is located in, off of Black Rock Road. So uh, you know, the county executive will be there, I'll be there. And uh, you know, this, this county needs to develop, I, I think, a Department of Agriculture. I really do. It's such an important industry in this state. I mean, in this county and in this state. And again, how many hundreds of millions of dollars between state and local money have we spent preserving seventy thousand acres? And we must continue to develop farmers and move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. And you know, clearly I also share your concerns and support the Ag Center. But let me uh, also just say that I have, for my colleagues, I have a red line version here. You know, I, I, I met with the community leadership. I met with the, the property owner, I met with the attorneys. And, and it was so good to see that the uh, the property owners met with the community. And it is my understanding that uh, agreements were made on various restrictions, which is what I have here in front of me. But uh, in the interest of time, and I'll share that with everybody here, of course. But right now, if there's no more questions or comments, I will move on to the speakers. And, and Jen, uh, you're first, so you can come on up and um... And you'll get ready, Ms. Crowe, for the second one. Crawl, I'm sorry. So Jen, you go first, and i- if I missed anything, uh, please help me out. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Chair, and members of the county council. Again, Jennifer Bussie, Whiteford Taylor, and um, yes, here testifying in support of Bill ten dash twenty-three. As Maryland has grown in population, not only have the acres of farms decreased, but also has the knowledge of farming operations and its importance to all of us. This bill provides an opportunity to preserve agriculturally-used land, educate the public on the importance of the local farming industry, and provide a stream of income to lessen the risk of adverse conditions on the farming, on, on farmers. The Lippi family brought this issue to my attention. Many of them are here today. They are fourth-generation farmers who have grown their business to employ over twenty members of their family, each with their own families, and to sustainably farm over eight thousand acres in Baltimore and Carroll Counties, with twenty-three hundred of those being in Baltimore County. Approximately twenty-five hundred acres of the land they farm is permanently in preservation, and five hundred of those are in Baltimore County. The Lippies came to me with the idea of using the scenic resources of their property in order to provide agricultural education and a stream of income to support the property. If this bill passes, my clients could provide county residents with agricultural education and the opportunity to host and attend events on beautiful property, enjoying spectacular views of acres of farmland. Opening up farms to the public is a wonderful way to educate the public, both in teaching young children about where their food comes from and in sharing with everyone how critical it is for all of us to retain land for farming. Councilman Jones was instrumental in pulling together members of the community to discuss this issue and concerns raised related to such a use. We thank Councilman Jones for listening and proposing the bill, and we look forward to continuing in those efforts to alleviate the community's issues. Um, and I, I heard mention of a red line bill. I know the family is very open to doing whatever to accommodate whatever concerns that they can. Um, so in, in closing, we ask you to vote in support of this legislation. Again, it will provide for a beautiful venue space and a stream of income for those promoting agriculture, education, and the preservation of the beautiful existing views in northern Baltimore County. I have provided, um, as was mentioned, to Councilman Jones's office um, a letter of support from the Farm Bureau and a petition signed by one hundred neighbors. And I have copies of those tonight as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, and how many people came to the town hall meeting?
Well, they might have to help me. Uh, we did have that petition counted up. I'd say approximately forty-five or so, or fifty.
Right, and that could have, some of them could have been the same, but for the most part, they were separate, right?
Correct.
It could have been some of the same people.
Right, it really was an evolution, um, as, as you mentioned, and starting with um, your colleague uh, of talking with the community and talking with neighbors, you know, the family. I have been, um, I've learned, and I really, I think it's wonderful that they don't want to ask again and again and ask too much of their friends and their neighbors. So I've been pushing them all along. So like I said, it was growing. So they reached out, I continued to push them to reach out. So yes, there were some overlap, but the numbers of support didn't grow.
And just to be clear, uh, what was one of the last things I did at the meeting?
Um...
Besides eat the sandwich? Before that part?
The last things you did at the meeting?
What did I ask people?
Ask of me?
No, everybody that was there.
Oh, I mean, I think everybody was very impressed with how you asked everyone to reach out to you, to communicate to you. And you've been very accessible. I know we've uh, really enjoyed all the interactions. And if it weren't for you, I don't think we would have gotten anywhere close as far.
I also asked people, if you were against it, raise your hand, if you're.
Oh, true, right, yes.
So no one raised a hand?
That's true.
In, in, in opposition.
Yes.
But I understand people had additional concerns, and that's fair. And I think we worked to take care of some of them.
Absolutely, yeah.
Go, one second, go ahead.
Yeah, Jen, uh, I've put in two pieces of legislation somewhat similar to this. And in both of them, I've addressed parking and traffic and limiting the number of weddings and the music, the, the uh, noise level, et cetera. Is that in the agreement or in the amendments or what?
It'll be, go ahead.
Um, the, the family has been in communications with, with an association and is proposing an agreement. However, it sounds like maybe the evolution of this could really be an even bigger win-win because with potential red lines to the bill or, you know, amendments, then um, those restrictions that I believe you're mentioning would be actually codified and then could be um, enforced by the zoning office.
Take a look at the Arg and Grill.
Okay.
Legislation, because it's, it's in there. Uh, all of the, the restrictions that I think uh, will help in this, with this issue. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so um, some of those things, w- we will take a look at that. But some of the things here are restrictions on uh, number one. Eighty percent of the property shall remain uh, pervious. And access drives which are not paved shall be considered. Uh, it limits the number of square feet that any additional, the property shall be no greater in size than twelve hundred square feet as measured on the ground floor. It talks about no alcohol, uh... Let me see, people can have alcohol during an event, but no additional alcohol sales. Uh, no, no, no wine festivals. Uh, I want to say a hundred and some events a year, no more than that, no more than two a day. None during the flea market that's there. So there's a whole list of items that would uh, sort of keep this from spiraling out of control.
Well, and, and if I may, Mr. Jones, one thing we, in discussions with you and, and what your vision for this might be, we, uh, we took those eighteen covenant items and we, uh, we actually, they, they were generic enough for the most part that they could be put into the regulations. So we, there, there is a section in the regulations, uh, I think it's section four oh two of the regulate, of the zoning regs that deal with the conversion of dwellings into something else. Uh, four oh two point one deals with residential uses, um, which is a little bit strange, converting a dwelling uh, into a residential use. But, uh, but then there's also, uh, four oh two point two deals with converting a dwelling into a T-room. And so this, this naturally fits into uh, converting a dwelling into a catering hall use. And so that potentially would be four oh two point three of the regulations. And then what we did was, uh, we, we set out all of those covenant uh, restrictions into the regulations into several subcategories. Uh, one of which is general restrictions such as, such as events, um, restrictions on the events themselves. Uh, second was the timing of the events, uh, when the, you know, uh, I think it's Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays only. Um, no more, as you said, no more than two a day. Um, and there has to be two hours between events if on the same day. And then the third was parking, lighting, and construction restrictions. Um, no parking along Hanover Pike. Uh, temporary lighting needs to be shut off no later than thirty minutes after the event. And again, other th- uh, additional restrictions like that. And then the final category was alcoholic beverages. Um, and again, no alcohol, um, or, or alcohol would, could be um, served but needed to end at a certain time before the end of the event. And no packaged sales, no brewery, distillery, winery, and that type of thing. So I think we put them in there in a way that this can, it's not just for this particular property. It will extend to any properties that might qualify.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you uh, forbid amplifiers if it's outside?
Uh, it does, it states that it must abide by the county's noise uh, requirements.
Which is, which is nothing.
Well, there, there is a county noise ordinance.
What does it say?
It says that, I don't have it off the top of my head, Mr. Catch.
It doesn't, it doesn't really say much.
But it does prohibit uh, unreasonable levels of noise.
I, I think that, uh, you know, what, what we've done in the other two cases I'm thinking of is we don't allow amplified music outside. Uh, inside is fine, out, but don't allow it outside. And we also set a decibel limit as to how loud the music can be, which, you know, no one has uh, had a problem with that. And the other thing we did, I don't know if you've, you've done this or not, but if the anticipated, anticipated crowd is above so many people that there be an individual there to direct traffic, uh, should there be, you know, because you, you don't want a cram, crowded situation uh, there. So I don't know if you've done that or not. But I, I remember in the bills that I put in that, that we've, we've done that.
Certainly open to that? That was not one of the requests.
These are suggestions because that, that I've used in other pieces of legislation that seemed, that have worked.
Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Bussie.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Chris?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, Sherri Crowell is on. Ms. Crowell, you are a panelist and you begin your testimony. Ms. Crowell? She's on and unmuted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Crowell, Crawl. If she's not there, why don't we just move on and, and keep her in queue? And when she comes back, uh, she'll certainly have an opportunity to speak. Meanwhile, we'll move on to Mr. Thomas.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thompson is not on. I have not been able to locate him since the beginning of the meeting, so we could move on to the next speaker.
Okay.
Who is also virtual, who is Kathleen Geppi. Hope I'm saying that properly. Jeppi? Ms. Jeppi, you are on as a panelist. Do you may begin your testimony? Ms. Jeppi?
Okay, we'll do the se- we'll, we'll do the same for her as well, and we'll move on to Patricia Fallon.
I wonder if the... Adam, can you check the volume on that? Just to make sure someone hasn't turned the volume on that. That's what I'm thinking, someone has, maybe someone has touched the remote to the monitor.
Nope.
No, it's on, okay. Just double checking. Uh, here she is, she's chatting. No, we cannot hear you, Ms. Jeppi. You are unmuted, though. Uh, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
Check your microphone. Press your spacebar and try to talk. Nope. Work on it, we will, we will continue to wait for you. But meanwhile, we'll go ahead with uh, our next speaker.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is in person, and it is Patricia Fallon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman and Councilmembers. Uh, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about Bill ten twenty-three. Uh, we did meet with the Lippi family last Sunday after we heard about the bill and did come up with a set of covenant agreements that our entire community did agree to. And I appreciate the fact that you have acknowledged them, Chairman, and that they have already been codified. And I think that is uh, really a big plus for the community. Um, so we really appreciate that. Uh, we do have some concerns, though, about the, the current wording of the bill. Uh, the bill allows any property between twenty and fifty acres to be considered for a catering hall. And if you provide it as, as right, then there's no development process review. There's no community input, no restrictions, and we are very concerned about that. Even in the meeting on Sunday, uh, it was very clear to us, and then from the beginning when we uh, had first heard about the request from the Lippi family, that this bill would be focused just on that property. That was always our understanding. And Chairman, when you came to the Bortner meeting that night, you even said it would be a red-haired Eskimo focused on that property. And our community always believed it would be. And, and like I said, the Lippi family, even up to Sunday morning, thought that legislation would be focused on their property. So we pulled the legis- So we pulled the legislation out along with our covenant agreement, and we all agreed on that. But all of us, including the Lippi family, were quite surprised that it wasn't just their property. So even Brad Rill pulls out a map of thirty on his phone and starts identifying other properties that this could relate to. And it was at least four, and we think it's maybe up to twelve. And that's of great concern to us, because if you do it as right, there's no development review. Someone could put up some type of any structure they want, just say, oh, we're feeding people, it's a catering event, with no restrictions. We could have a serious problem with Hanover Pike. And Hanover Pike, as you all know, is the center of where the farm area is. The west, the east side feeds the Lock Raven Reservoir with water flow. The west side feeds Liberty Reservoir. The state highway works very hard to keep the flow of water and the property very clean and the soil. And if we allow all these different properties to just do something like this, we could really be in danger of keeping Hanover Pike, the rural agriculture community, clean that we've really worked so hard for. But again, I want to say, we did work with the Rill family. We came to an agreement on the restrictions and the limitations. And I really appreciate the time that we all spent together in doing this. It was just a really good meeting. And, but again, we have concerns about the paragraph of the legislation. And we really would hope that we could limit it to 5517 Bortner Road. That's where the whole, the three stakeholders, I'm sorry.
You can keep going.
Thank you. Okay, the three stakeholders, again, were Councilman Jones, who said it would be just that property.
I did.
You did, yes, sir. And the Lippi family thought it was their property, and our whole organization and community thought it was just that property. And we support that because of your acknowledgement of the covenant. And so we really appreciate that.
We are, we've been in discussion, once I found out that there are some others that could meet this. We've been in discussion about maybe some other things that possibly can be done, and hopefully we'll get those wrapped up. I know one of the suggestions, and we haven't flushed it out yet, but maybe the answer is you can only have one such facility within a four-mile radius, five-mile radius. And I think that will wipe everybody else out. But that's just.
Hanover Pike is about ten miles long from the light at thirty, all the way down the Carroll County line. And there are multiple properties that really could fit into this. So it is about a ten-mile length of piece of road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question for the Secretary, could it be amended to saying west of Hanover Pike, north of a certain road, and south of another road? Because that would.
It certainly can, Mr. Catch, but it cannot be so focused that it only applies to one single property, because that is the definition of contractor spot zoning. So I understand what the witness is saying, but you can't, you can't, you shouldn't, I should say, legislate like that. And we try, we're trying to, when you have, when you pass legislation that is pretty focused, your assumption is it's geared toward one property, because that's the property you're dealing with as legislators. But we try to make it so that that legislation will have at least some applicability elsewhere so that if there ever is a challenge, it will pass constitutional muster. And this is one such example. So this would apply potentially, I think, to four other properties. The only thing I would say is keep in mind, they still have to be at least twenty acres and no more than fifty. So, but, but yes, we, in answer to Mr. Jones's question, we can, we can narrow things a little bit more and put some restrictions on the use so that they just don't proliferate.
Please do.
Councilman Jones, his recommendation to make it a ten-mile radius, I think that, or whatever radius was, I thought that was a very good suggestion, because also you don't have them so close together then. And it does then allow areas, other areas maybe. But a ten-mile radius, I think, would be very good. Is that possible, sir?
Anything.
I can't really say right off the top of my head, because I don't know what the, it's hard to say.
Everything's possible.
Thank you, sir.
Like Disneyland around here.
There you go. All right. Any other questions?
Is that it?
Yes, that is.
Thank you so much for coming, I really appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you sharing your comments with us, we really appreciate you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Geppi believes that she's worked out her audio issue, and then after that, Ms. Crowell is also on, so we'll try her again.
Okay, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Wonderful.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the county council, my name is Kathy Geppi, and I am president of the North County Community Group, which is located in northwestern Baltimore County. The North County Community Group is opposed to this bill because it conflicts with Baltimore County code. We feel the bill needs to be modified to address the needs and concerns of rural county residents. Rural conservation zones, including RC2, were established to foster conditions favorable for continued agricultural use in Baltimore County. Catering is not permitted by right or special exception in these zones. Bill 1023 attempts to allow a non-agricultural commercial business to operate by right on rural conservation property if agriculture education activities occur. In its current form, the bill raises more unanswered questions than it provides clarity. The combination of agricultural education and a catering hall on rural conservation property has never been done before. Agricultural education activities are not defined. There are no program details for the catering hall or agricultural education. The community has many questions and concerns, such as what percentage of the business would go toward agricultural education and what would be in catering? Are the future farmers of America or any of the Baltimore County public schools involved in the educational program? What specific activities are proposed and what are their limits? How will event parking be handled? And will traffic on the already overburdened Hanover Pike be impacted? As written, we feel strongly that Bill 1023 leaves significant opportunity for current and future property owners to violate the spirit and intent of rural conservation zoning and sets a dangerous precedent for similar bills in other areas of Baltimore County zoned RC2. Bill 1023 should be modified to define both activities, specify limits, and be a use by special exception, not by right. The special exemption process will give the community a level of comfort by providing the opportunity for information and input in a public hearing before the administrative law judge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Geppi. We certainly appreciate you hanging in the air, and we certainly appreciate your comments. Thank you very much for your participation. Next speaker, Chris.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, we're going to call back to Ms. Sherry Crowell. Ms. Crowell, are you there?
Yes, I am.
We can hear you.
Great. I'd like to start out by saying thank you for letting me speak. And my name is Sherry Bosley Crowell, and I am a co-owner of a farm in northern Baltimore County. I have been blessed growing up on this farm and learning firsthand about agriculture. I was also blessed to be a part of 4H. With small farms being sold due to high costs of caring for them, it is a necessity to help the farms that are still working and making a living. Farmers work together in this area and help each other when needed. We are a community of caring and hard work ethics, especially ones of generations of farming. I very much welcome a farm that would have a venue to teach all ages about farm life, and it would add income to the farm. Children especially love being in the country, and they are our future. We have nothing like that in the area, and I truly know we would enjoy and benefit by this. We need to all be in this together and save our farms from being housing developments. What a great place for the community to get together and enjoy the beauty. Thank you again for listening.
Well, we thank you for your comments, and we really appreciate you taking the time to share them with us. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Lou Santoni. Mr. Santoni, you are on as a panelist, you may begin your testimony. You there, Mr. Santoni?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Lou Santoni, and I am a, I'm involved on two different levels in this discussion. One, I own a business in Glendon, Maryland, about eight miles south of this area. This will be, the bill 1023 will be impacted. Santoni's a marketplace in catering. And to be full disclosure, I have a catering company of about a hundred and sixty, seventy employees. We're the sixth or seventh largest caterer in the Baltimore metropolitan area. And so we do a lot of business, we do a lot of catering in farms and venues throughout Baltimore and Carroll County. And I, you know, when I found out about this project, I was very excited about it, because I think it is, I think it was well thought out. I think that, I think it would be very successful. But I, so having said that from the business perspective, the real reason I'm coming here is because in my sixty-two years, I've been, have had the privilege of living abut at a farm about five times. And of the five different places I lived, only the current place I'm at now, which is probably three blocks from the area that this will be impacted, is the only farm, the only, the place I live now is the only place that there's still a farm. They were all family farms. And I am very sensitive to the reasons, the challenges that family farmers are under. And I agree with Ms. Sherry Crowell. I believe that if you can have a creative, outside-of-the-box, well-thought-out plan, which I believe that this family has done, and this project will have, you know, making sure that we've put in the things in there that makes sense to keep it, protect the community, I believe it can be successful. I believe that anything we can do to support the family farmer is critical. The things I remember hearing at the very beginning of this was preserving land is important. Agriculture impact in this county is important, and I completely agree with that. And anything that we can do to preserve and to give these family farmers a fighting chance in a creative, respective way, I think is going to be impactful. The one council member said, we're talking about the challenge in that ag center over by Hunt Valley, along Schwan Road there. To me, the best place to educate farmers is through having farmers who can continue to be viable. And with this education piece, and with having a working family farm all around that, and with the success that this family may enjoy with this, with the possibility of these two avenues, I think it would be, I think it would be very important to support this. And I support it as a community member, as a business owner, and as someone who has watched family farms disappear and housing built up. And I'm telling you, I think that we would be penny-wise and pound-fullish not to support this. And then all of a sudden to have them be in a position to have to sell pieces of that land off and then housing developments along that corridor. If you think you have problems with traffic now, put all those houses in there, put the additional burden on the infrastructure, the schools. I think that this makes more sense to me, and that's what I support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santoni. We certainly appreciate your comments and certainly appreciate your business. And thank you so much for being an employer and doing all the things that create jobs and economic sustainability here in Baltimore County. We thank you, and we know there's other places you can go, but you're here, and we appreciate you. I have another comment from one of my colleagues.
Mr. Santoni, what is your relationship to the longtime supermarket in Baltimore? Any relationship?
Yeah, so Bob and Paul Santoni own, actually, my grandfather started the company nineteen thirty in the back of his house in a fifteen-by-twenty-foot home in Highland Town on Mount Pleasant Eaton Street. There, he had four sons, Italian immigrant sons, and my father was one of them. And the four, two of the boys went into the business, Bob and Paul, and the rest of them got out. And I'm the third generation with my brother Rick. We started a franchise in Glendon, Glendon Square, back in nineteen eighty-six, thirty, almost thirty-eight years ago. I was twenty-five and had eighteen employees. And now we have, we have continued to push, to try and remain relevant in a very challenging environment. We have, as I said, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy employees. We have a hybrid store, much like what this family is trying to do here, with being farmers, being educators, and having a catering business that can support the community. And we've done the same thing with a marketplace and with a catering company. And so Bob and Paul Santoni, and they are out of the business, and that business no longer just, we're the only Santonis there is now in this type of business in the Maryland area.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate the history and appreciate you sharing it with us. Any additional questions, comments? Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is in person, and it is Renee Hamidi.
Thank you so much for pronouncing my name correctly, I really appreciate it. Chairman Jones, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I represent the Valley's Planning Council, which has been working with the county for more than sixty years to develop smart land use policies and legislation. Hood zoning and land preservation programs have helped maintain the look and feel of the rural areas of the county. This property is adjacent to VPC's territory, literally across the road. Bill 1023 allows by right, a use that is not permitted on any rural conservation lands, not even by special exception. Special legislation like this sets a precedent for catering halls by right all over the county with their attendant noise and traffic. This particular property comprises prime and productive soils and farmland of statewide importance. While using it for agricultural educational, agricultural education is laudable. I'm concerned that the needs of the catering hall business, which has nothing to do with agriculture, will eclipse the agricultural educational activities and the production of food and fiber. I'm concerned about traffic and noise. I'm concerned because the Hanover Road Corridor study referenced in the bill mentions that commercial uses exacerbate traffic problems. The study also says that RC2 was established to foster conditions favorable to continued agricultural use. It mentions that some uses are permitted by special exception, which requires a public hearing, unlike this kind of legislation. It also mentions that the RC2 zone encourages landowners to preserve their land using the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Program, which the owner of this property has done on many other parcels he owns, including one adjacent to the subject parcel. The state and county have created ways for farmers to make money without turning farms into event venues and without relying on councilmanic courtesy to avoid creating a new special exception use. Thank you for your attention.
Well, we thank you so much for coming in and standing by to speak, and we really appreciate your comments. Certainly take it all under advisement. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Brad Rill. Mr. Rill is also here in person.
Chairman Jones and Councilman, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak here.
Appreciate you being here.
Like to speak in support of Bill 1023. Here in Maryland and in Baltimore County, farmers are recognized as leaders in the U.S. and the world. In fact, just two weeks ago at our farm, the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture and the European Union Ag Commissioner came to our farm to meet and talk about climate-smart practices. With our emphasis on the environment, soil, and nutrient management plans, and sustainable farming practices that are practiced right here in Maryland and Baltimore County, we are leaders in the world, basically. And so we farm around developments and in communities. Ag education is essential to a positive relationship with the public. Ag education is essential to a positive relationship with the public. Children and adults need to see how and where their food is raised. My wife and I have four children that are all now part of our family farming operation, fourth, fourth generation. With skyrocketing input costs, the young farmers of today have to be creative and diverse, finding alternative sources of income to support their family farm in a changing world. This bill will help do that, allowing for recreation and events in the heart of sustainable ag practices and gorgeous Baltimore County views. It will support local farm businesses from the sale of roadside fruits and produce and flowers to local catering businesses that serve fresh meats, poultry, and vegetables. I urge you to support this bill as it will have a positive impact, helping local farm businesses economically and creating opportunity for the community to learn and interact with today's agriculture. And I'd also like to say that Ed Lippie was one of the founders of Mark at the Baltimore County Ag Center. And we have, since the beginning of that, been very supportive of it. And in fact, we always donated all of our time, equipment, seed, and we did all the cropping there for the education. We supported Farmer Stan with his ag education endeavors there. We feel that is of the utmost importance for our industry to survive because we are farming in amongst developments and, you know, sustainable ag and them learning about it is truly important for our industry. This past October, at the property that we purchased, Farmer Stan, this was the first year since COVID hit that we were able to do anything. In the month of October, we had 3,100 school, elementary-age schoolchildren come through. We had a little corn maze set up, we had a pumpkin patch, we had soybeans, corn planted. You know, this, this property has the ability with the acreage to have lots of different showcased pieces of agriculture. We're going to expand it into that. And then, you know, along with that, people can, the community can come and, you know, have celebrations, weddings, whatever it may be, right in, you know, an agricultural setting with lots to look at. And, you know, be able to learn and enjoy the, the beautiful countryside. Thank you. Any questions for me?
No, we thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker, who is also in person, is Paul Merritt.
Hello, Councilman Jones and the council. All right, my name is Paul Merritt. I'm the president of the Hanover Road Association. Our area that we cover encompasses about 20 square miles in northwest Baltimore County. We have approximately 300 members in our association. It range from farmers to homeowners to any particular profession you could think of and any kind of land use that you have that's agricultural. And a lot of our use mostly is agricultural with very limited business exposure. Now, for principle, the HRA does not support the original legislation as it was written. As written, the legislation does not target the original intent of limiting the proposed use to the specific, specific property it was intended for, which we've already discussed already because it's kind of, you know, something that I guess that you're trying to work through. The issue for some of it is to be with, would be that through subdivision, I think we could obtain more than four properties, and that would be our fear, you know, is the proliferation of the, the proposed use. So that's something that I think that really needs to be addressed. And also, just to keep in mind, the Hanover Road Corridor has remained well-preserved and has been subject to very controlled development over the past 30 years. The corridor is a prime example of rural Baltimore County. It is a model of how the community and the county government can work together, which has worked together through the years for a lot, a lot. And protecting our irreplaceable farmland and watershed headwaters should be of utmost importance to us all. It would be a tragedy to have this undone. And the Hanover Road community respectfully requests that the county council resolve to continue to protect and limit growth along the Hanover Pike Corridor as outlined in the Hanover Road Corridor Study. The Hanover Road Association, through membership input, had negotiated the covenant agreement, which has, you know, morphed into this law, to law and regulation. And with, we did this with the petitioners and, which has been, well, we didn't provide it to you because you've already worked on what we've provided. So also, the Hanover Road community requests that the council consider that the regulation change would require that the dwelling to be converted to, the dwelling to be converted to be described as existing. So it would be an existing dwelling rather than just to try to specify the, something more to the legislation, if that would help. And you've already addressed, my second issue was with, was about covenant being attached to it. That would be a requirement, and you already are going to make a regulation change that matches that covenant agreement. It is also important to the community that this limit the infringement of the property rights of the surrounding properties because of this non-conforming use. And most of the non-conforming use would be after hours and beyond what normal agricultural use is during normal hours. So I'd like to thank you for your time, and I will follow up with an email to you.
Absolutely. Are you done?
Yes.
I mean, you have more time.
Oh, fine, thank you.
Listen, I appreciate you coming in and really.
Sure, and I thank you for your time with meeting and everything. I really do thank you.
No problem at all, and we, we'll, we'll work it out. We'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Ms. Bell Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is virtual, and it is George Sekelis. Mr. Sekelis, you are on as a panelist.
Can you hear me? You okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. My name is George Sekelis. I own Fort Kelly's Restaurant in Hampstead, as well as Fort Kelly's Restaurant in Frederick County. I have about 100 employees. I won't be long, but I just want to mention that earlier in the hearing, we mentioned that farming is in jeopardy. The future of farming is in jeopardy, and I personally believe that we've come to a crossroad that if farmers want to continue farming, they need to bring in additional income. I don't believe that because they want to bring in additional income, that they don't take pride in farming. I think that farming is their utmost importance, but for them to continue farming, we need to be able to give them access to bring in additional income. The last thing I want to bring up is that in the community, especially at the Hampstead Restaurant that I spend most of my time, I brought this up to a lot of the locals, and their, the feedback I have been getting is that they're very excited about the ag education, which I think is going to help the community tremendously. I know that my niece and my nephew are very excited to attend that as well. That's all I have. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you very much. We appreciate you calling in and appreciate your patience. I know it's been long. All right, thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Our next registered speaker was Wayne Armikost. I have not been able to locate him on our attendee list since the beginning of the meeting, so I'm not sure that he ever logged on.
Wayne, if you're listening, the door is open, so you can get in before we're done.
And our final speaker this evening, Mr. Chair, is Stacy Sellers. Ms. Sellers, you are on as a panelist.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can turn your camera on if you like.
Uh, no thanks. My name is Stacy Sellers, and I'm the owner of Panora Acres Inc. and MLI's Farmhouse LLC. I have a farm in Manchester, Maryland. We raise beef and grain, and I have a flower shop. I'm a huge supporter of ag, so I am in favor of Bill 1023 for many reasons. One being the advantage to promote ag. I feel redundant because everyone else kind of hit this already, but the young generation in ag is dwindling away. If there's a place to support it and promote it, any kind of ag education, I'm in favor. It's a plus to have a class where children can learn where food actually comes from and not just the grocery store, how to manage the land, and how to keep farming family traditions alive, and this will help aid in longer upcoming farming generations. Ag education will hopefully bring more interest to other kids that weren't raised on a farm. Some of those kids don't have a clue what our kids know. Another reason to be in favor is diversity. I've been to many venues for my flower business, many which are farms and my favorites. Being a farmer and seeing farmland disappear and being developed is heartbreaking. So what others can do to diversify in making a catering hall, for example, and still being able to farm the remaining ground to add that additional income for their families is a great idea. Nowadays, just farming is tough with cost inputs. Like myself, this time last year, we were selling our dairy cows, and we transitioned to beef and grain, and I have my flower shop. So I grow flowers, I specialize in wedding florals, and this gives my family a chance to survive in different work areas. Another reason for being in favor is location. Many beautiful farm-based venues are in PA. So I have, to have one in Maryland and being very local, that it's right up the street, will enable more businesses, more people to do business in Maryland. If this bill passes, it won't only benefit me, it'll benefit other local vendors in the area. San Tonys being one. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. We appreciate you hanging in there. We certainly appreciate your comments, and thank you so much for being here in Baltimore County and being in business in Baltimore County. We appreciate it. Sure. Did any of the people that, did anybody else show up? Nope, we have another speaker. Glenn?
On him.
Meanwhile, Chris, you keep looking for the others. Glenn, when you get up there for the record, state your name and.
Yeah, sir.
Is that it?
Uh, my name is Glenn Elsrood. I live at 5423 Mount Gillian Road, which is Reisterstown, Maryland. Our family is probably a fourth-generation farmer too. My grandfather, my dad, and all were farmers and farm the farms on Mount Gillian Road. The Lippie farm operation is actually an excellent example of what we would like to see all of Maryland, actually probably all of this country's farming to move to. It is a farm operation that grows a variety of vegetables. It also has, grows a number of acres of string beans for Hanover cannery. Agriculture, you have to realize agriculture has changed quite a bit from what it was in the past. We have the grain farmers who, in their case, export by cargo containers a lot of soybeans that they buy from other farmers and what they grow themselves to an Asian market. There's also corn that's grown in this area, and a lot of the market for that is down on the eastern shore to the Bruler Farms. Then you have a new generation of agriculture, which is a lot of young people who cannot afford to buy big farms, but they want to be tillers of the soil, and they grow vegetables. And they have people who come to their property, they have CSAs, and they provide excellent quality and fresh vegetables for a number of people. And people want to know where their food comes from. They want to buy good quality food. We have a problem in this world, or this country, with food waste. And so much of it is because of transfer. It's grown out of state, and then it's brought into here and in the process. There's a lot of it that's lost. When we can grow vegetables and fruits during the summer months and provide those directly to the people, they can get a feel of the land, they go sometimes to the farms. They can see the crops growing in the fields, the cattle grazing. They get a love and a respect for agriculture and the area in which they live in. This is Maryland, this is God's country, and we need to protect these farms. We need to help these people survive on these farms, excuse me. And this is a training class. The Farm Bureau has been to the property two times. I'm the president of the Baltimore County Farm Bureau right now. We salute the opportunity to teach people how crops are grown, how to farm, how to respect the land. It's the same respect that farmers have when they put their property in land preservation programs. They're selling them for a fraction of what they would be worth as a development, but they love the land. So this is an opportunity for a lot of people to learn about agriculture, the training classes. The other things that I would say about Lippies is they have test plots where it's, they do soybeans and corn and wheat and all these things, and anybody can come and see the results of those crops. And those are the seeds that are sold to the farmers, which they use for seed in the future so that they can increase their crops. When the Secretary of Agriculture was here and the Secretary of Agriculture from the European areas, they were here because they know Americans have the ability to feed the world's population. And they are the great farmers. They, everybody can learn a lot from this and that operation. So I've probably talked beyond my time, but I'm proud to be a farmer, and that's a good operation.
Well, I thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your patience, and I take it you're in support of the bill.
Thank you.
And thank you. And I'm just going to, I guess, I'm a, I heard everybody comment and all the testimony, and I really appreciate it very much. But I guess wanted to put one thing on the table, and I would urge anybody out there if you don't think I'm accurate in what I'm saying, I just want to say it. The Lippie family is in the farming business. So you could have just as easily bought this property and farmed it. But in order to do the education piece, you have to make the property pay for itself. Hence, the catering hall to help fund the education piece and vice versa. You don't really make a lot of money off the education piece. So I guess wanted to put that out there. It is, it's not like one or the other. In order to support the education piece, the property has to pay for itself. And I don't think anybody would fault anybody for making sure that, you know, when you buy a piece of property, you get some return on it. Any question or comments from the members? I want to thank everybody for testifying. We know it's been a long day, and for all the comments, yes, know that we're going to be taking all of those into consideration. And just know that I certainly made some statements, and I'm going to do my very best to stick to what I said. So on that note, I thank you all very much for coming, and we'll see you next week. Have a great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, wait a minute.
Motion to formally recognize it being Pi Day and therefore approximately your birthday.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Where is the county executive? We could make this to Julian Jones Day or something. But listen, I can't think of a better way of celebrating my birthday than with you all. So I appreciate it very much being.
Happy birthday, sir.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.